Right, called me to order at 6:34 on Tuesday, May the 8th. Feel like I have to recognize myself.
No.
May I, may I?
Sure.
Speak please. On behalf of the Sherburne School Committee, we would like to thank Greg and Scott for their time, commitment to our schools and our town, and all their time spent on subcommittees. We look forward to seeing you during public comment.
Yes, 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 well, you're welcome.
Standing invite.
Yes.
It's been my pleasure, Scott.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I'll open the floor to public comment, item three.
I was told I have to come for the CSA, or I was asked from the board members.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
I've never done this, so I don't know what the guidelines are, but I will be CSA president next year, so I guess I better figure it out quickly. I have an update, I don't know how much detail you guys want, so if you want more...
Probably less is better, but we do want the update.
Yeah, I won't talk forever, I'm not that kind of person.
Okay.
We've just, we've had a ton of activity going since after Christmas break, we've had a lot of appreciation things for bus driver, custodian, we have teacher breakfast appreciation coming up. On top of that, we've also been doing a lot of fundraising, so we've had our raffle baskets, which made us a little bit under 5K. We've had Pine Hill Night at Nosh and Grog, which was really highly attended, which was great, they opened their doors, they'll give you a percentage type of thing, so I'm hoping we get to do that again, because like the whole town, I felt like was there.
How does, how does that work?
They reached out to us, and they said that they would host a night, and then you go, and they, a portion of the proceeds of that night, they give back to Pine Hill, and then an even more amount of like t-shirt sales.
Oh, really?
Will give back to, but it was, it was a very busy night, and they were not expecting that, so Pine Hill came out in force.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, so that was really fun, so we did that, hoping to do it again. We just recently approved all of the teacher grants, so those were a little over 2,000. The board unanimously approved all of those, so that is being processed and sold out, I don't know if it's done yet, or how that's progressing, since I wasn't at our last meeting. And we had our book fair, which we partnered with Park Street Books, and this is the second year we've done that, and that's a big hit to, they do such, Jim at Park Street Books does such an amazing job, he brings all the toys, all the books, and it's just fun, so we did great, we even made a little bit more than last year, so that was a benefit. Right now, our main goal is trying to fill open board positions, so we're gonna host a kind of meet and greet to get to know the CSA, yeah?
That's available.
To try to recruit some new blood and potentially old, and get, get some, we've got a lot of open positions, so trying to get people more aware of what the CSA does. We've had a lot of new families come in, so just try to bring awareness and realize you don't have to commit your entire life if you sign up to be on the board, and it is fun, and it's rewarding, and you get to be in, in the thick of it, so we've got that, and then also our end-of-year popsicle classroom social that happens, which is always chaotic, but so much fun for the kids. So, I know the parents always kind of, maybe the teachers too, but it's fun, I think we always get a good turnout, end of the year. And that's it.
Thank you.
Short and sweet.
That was perfect. A question if I may, I think your, the latest fundraising campaign is Pine Hill Patrons?
Yes.
For those that don't have a backpack for that flyer to come home in, I think there might be folks in the audience, or beyond the immediate Pine Hill family, that may still be interested in supporting Pine Hill through a campaign like that, I think it formerly was the Fund for Excellence, I think?
Yep, yep.
How could others get involved in the, to be a Pine Hill Patron, or get that information to make contributions?
If they didn't get, there is, so there is online donation through the website.
Okay.
I think there's a link out there.
Pine Hill CSA.
Yeah, through the Pine Hill CSA website, so, and then it goes out in the newsletter that goes out every Monday, there's always a link to our website there, and then I guess anybody who didn't get it, or maybe wants more information can reach out to the CSA. Everybody should be on that newsletter, if they aren't getting it, and they want to...
Well, there might be, or past families that may not be on the mailing list anymore, I'm not sure if there's a mailing list that the CSA used to use as to reach out to, you know, like a special list to reach out to former families, or how that works, but I wanted to at least let the video have that information, so.
Yeah.
Folks that are interested can know where to reach out.
We just redid our website, so I feel bad that I don't have it off the top of my head, but we do have, isn't it pinehillcsa.org?
Or is it Pine Hill School CSA?
I think we changed it to pinehillcsa.org. Yeah, we just redid it last year, and I think everything... We had to redo the domain name. Maybe it is Pine Hill School, because that's bringing me to definitely not our website. Pinehillschoolcsa.org, you got it, Scott.
Great.
Yep, so there's more information out there for anybody who'd like to, that's a good point.
I would suggest, and I've done this for most people that have sat there, that if you contacted directly former Pine Hill parents, me being one, and asked them directly, because once we leave Pine Hill, there's, you're not part of the auction or anything, and as Scott said, I think there are a lot of people that would donate, me being one, if somebody kind of reminded me and approached me directly, so I think it's worthwhile to look into...
I will definitely take that.
Look into past contributors to see who may be willing to continue.
No, that's a really, that's a really good idea, so I will take that back and dig into how we can get that out to a broader audience.
All right, thanks very much, appreciate it. Reports. Dr. Brown.
Good evening. Not in my report, but I would be remiss if I didn't make mention that Saturday's Challenge Success Conference at Dover Sherborne High School was amazing, having Stanford University choose our community as a host site, and it was really a privilege. We had several breakout sessions, colleagues, administrative colleagues and teacher colleagues from many of our buildings were there, and we had a chance to share a lot of the efforts and impacts that our school district has made with regard to our challenge success work, and Dover Sherborne, particularly our high school was a real leader in that, so it was a privilege to, to be part of that. I picked a few things to highlight, we, as you're aware, the Chickering School has grown preschool, integrated preschool model over the last couple of years, and we've met, all told by the end of June, we will met, have met probably about eight times this year as really trying to departmentalize and organize the preschool program of Dover and Sherborne, and share resources across our preschools. So I highlighted, to let you know that a lot of our professional development has been around taking stock of where we are with the Massachusetts preschool standards, and developing cohesive curriculum across both of our communities will be, will be important work for next year. Yesterday, in this very space, all teachers of reading here at Pine Hill School were great sports in participating in some, some web-based training that, that we went through. We're looking to, and have obtained site licenses for the Lexia Core 5 Reading Program, we're very excited, it's the most comprehensive resource available to us to support students who are struggling to make effective progress in reading. We've, we've used other web-based resources, but not all of them, not all of them do that, provide us instruction across all aspects of reading with students, a lot of them are known for reading fluency, or they provide us different levelized texts, but this, this has a real comprehensive focus, and I included some detail in there, so, so we look forward to expanding the repertoire, doesn't take the place of instruction, but it expands the repertoire of tools that teachers and parents have available to, to provide kids really targeted focused intervention. The other thing I highlighted, one of my personal favorite parts of my job is welcoming our new kindergarten families, and eventually the students that will meet in June, and last week, we had an information session for our incoming kindergarten parents and guardians, and a well-attended evening, our kindergarten team always does a gracious and great job of showcasing the, the structures and learnings and routines of our kindergarten program. To date, we have 53 students, and anticipating that will register some additional students through the MECA program.
How does, how does the 53 compare to what we're projecting?
Fifty-three.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
The census projections, in my six years here, the census projections have, have always leveled out, while some families might move, and others might move, you know, move out and move in, but the number, the number, the number holds as a good target. I talked to you about some of the personnel changes since our last school committee meeting, we're delighted to welcome back Rachel Santiano from a leave of absence, you can see that Rebecca Mealy, second grade teacher, is taking some family leave time, and we've worked out a cohesive schedule to support the second grade learners in her classroom. One of our educational assistants relocated out of state and attended a resignation, and our school nurse is, continues to be out on a medical leave, she'll be back May 14th.
It was May 21st.
May 21st, you just got bumped, thank you for reminding me, much to, much to our nurses' dismay, an extra week, and I wanted to publicly thank Chrisha Mahoney for being a really great substitute nurse, she's bringing excellent judgment and a really kind heart to, to her work here at Pine Hill, and we're, we're very lucky and appreciative. Many, many activities and events you can see listed, and I certainly won't go through them all, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great, thanks, any questions? Thank you very much. Ms. Smith.
Good evening. I am, I've presented a report in the packet, and I just wanted to talk to you all about, particularly about the choirs, which have been a work of the Special Education Department in getting our singing voices better, no. We've been working on thinking of ourselves as a systems of school, and collaborating our, our ideas and our thinking and our work together, and that has been a new practice brought to the district, so we assembled ourselves as vertical choirs, which were voluntary, teachers chose to, I sent out a document, teachers selected what choir they may be interested in, and then I discussed that with our leadership team, and our leadership team was in full support of beginning these vertical conversations, so for the first time, special ed teachers gathered together across the district in a very, in a small group of about, mostly about 17 to 20 educators at a time, to talk about different topics. The choirs would meet on two different occasions, and then meet with the entire department, which also didn't happen at all last year, and I don't think has happened in the past, would gather together as a whole department on a half-day professional development day, and review what the little choir had come to understand, or what questions it was grappling with. So we had three focus areas, we had the B grid choir, which is very specific about inclusion instruction, we had the continuum choir, which really began to look at the transition from students from building to building, and also from grade to grade, and we had the eligibility choir, which really focused on, obviously as the name indicates, whether or not students, and how we are qualifying students and making them eligible for special education across the district, and what that process looks like. So again, in each of those instances, the small choir met, and then sort of did breakout sessions and a whole group instruction with me, with the entire department, so it really began to build some significant community and enjoyment and professionalism between our, our special educators throughout the district, so it was very well received, I did feedback forums at each one of the meetings, and reviewed that very closely to understand if the community felt like we were moving at the right speed, were we being listened to, did everybody have a voice, so all of those things were really important to me as I understand how we can move forward together, and look at avenues to make us even better and stronger in our delivery of special education. So I hope to continue those choirs into the next year in a similar model, actually with the same topics, because I think the work we began doing is uncovering lots of other ways to continue the conversation, so people said, very clearly, teachers said, "I want more, I want to look at this more carefully, I want to look at outcomes around this," and so we have good leading opportunities into next year already for professional development and growth. And then the report goes on to talk about our specific programs in the district, so the, the language-based program at the region is, is doing well, we are, we continue to be supported by Ann Larson, our consultant, and we're looking at how that program is growing, particularly at the high school level, as our students are aging through that program, it sort of still feels like a new program to the district as we've expanded. The Life Skills Program at the high school remains quite small, but really effective, the participants in that program have felt very much a part of the whole building, and all of the exciting building and, and community-based activities that happen at the region. The Strategic Learning Center at Chickering, as, as it does every year, will continue to undergo a, a relook to see what the needs are, and the integrated, as Barbara mentioned, the integrated preschools in Dover and Sherborne continue to model themselves around the idea of thinking of, of a systems of school, and how do we, how do we do what we do well, and share what we do well across the river, as they say. I think that's it.
Great, thank you, sounds, sounds great to me. The Life Skills, refresh my memory, the Life Skills Program, is that, is that where we hired, the system hired somebody?
Yes.
It's gonna be a new class.
That's right.
So, so what is, what exactly, I mean, I think I know what you do in Life Skills, but can you just tell us briefly?
Sure, sure, so, so a student that would fit into the Life Skills curriculum is probably a student who's not maybe as cognitively capable as other students, they may take an alternative MCAS exam, and earn an alternative diploma, or a competency diploma, or a certificate of attendance. They're students that are most likely going to stay in school till they're 22, and need additional support even once graduating to maybe take some college classes, or some supported employment opportunities.
So is there work involved, like some that I think I've heard about, is there in school, learning basic functioning, I guess, and how to deal with people, and then part of that, they may work four hours a day, or something like that?
Absolutely. Typically, we look at doing that in the four years from 18 to 22, right, so we, we try to keep them as a part of the community in the school environment, but sometimes their curriculum looks pretty different.
Yeah.
So instead of doing algebra, maybe you're doing functional math, right?
Great.
Thank you.
Next one, Ms. Smith.
Same topic, the out-of-district coordinator is working closely with this teacher, and it's the hope that maybe some kids who are out of district might come back.
That's, that's, that continues to be my hope for all of our students, in particular, it's important to keep that, to have that classroom and have that opportunity, we haven't identified anybody that is coming back, you know, I've, I've been in touch, and the out-of-district coordinator continues to be in touch with families that are enrolled, and are Dover Sherborne families, but are already engaged in where they've been, and so it feels like a hard transition for families, so, but we, we continue to showcase it and offer it, and I think grow our, grow our district around it, which is really healthy.
Is there a model program, I know kids were in Lexington, I guess?
Wellsley, we have some kids in Wellsley and Brookline, and we've, and we've looked at those programs, yes, yes, good stuff, Westwood.
Part of the problem for Dover Sherborne and Life Skills Programs is that we don't necessarily have a cohort of kids, and this is not a new thing for our system, we don't necessarily have a cohort of kids who kind of fit a Life Skills Program criteria, and so, because it's only a small number, that's a harder sell for families.
Right.
Because they know if they were to advocate, or they believe if they were to advocate for their child to go to another place, they'll be with students with similar challenges. So this is one of our ongoing challenges, and I, and I believe we mentioned it in the strategic plan, that one of the things that we need to look at as we look at our special education, especially under the guise of resource efficiency, is whether or not we consider allowing kids from other systems to attend our program. A lot of systems do that, I think people get hung up on the school choice thing, it's not the same, it's just tuition of a kid in, essentially, they're paying the cost of the tuition, and it allows our student to benefit from being with a similar, similarly challenged peer. So it's not perfect, and it's gonna take some, some more discussion, but I think that that could make a difference for us, it's one of those things that we have to grapple with as a small system. The other thing that's really important is that it be, that we be proactive on the front end, because in fact, when you ask people to bring their kids back, if they've been outplaced in a certain school for 10 years, it's a big ask.
It's a, it's a risk.
It's a big ask, so we really would prefer to have the programs in place and keep our kids in-house, right from the start, and make it such that they, the parents and the children feel this is the right place.
That's right.
It's best for our general ed students and our students.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that is, that's part of our, those are part, big part of our goals.
And we have had inquiry for our Life Skills Program.
That's good.
From other districts? Oh, that's great.
It just makes sense to have it close by, because I know kids go to Lexington, like for four hours, and it's...
They ride, the traffic and everything else.
Their ride doesn't show up, or whatever.
Well, and then, and then as adult services kick in, you want really to train the students to access the world in their community, right, so you want them to be a part of what's happening here, not what's happening in another community, because that's where adult services will also take place.
And to my elementary Pine Hill-only perspective, more kids with more, more complex challenges coming in through preschool-age services, we gotta get this right, so that, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Those students, so that, so that more students don't go out of district.
True.
The good news is that we know it, and the bad news is that we now need to make it happen, and that's easier said than done, and it's also something that we may have to reach across the river and see if we can perhaps share with Dover in some of these challenges, because they face the same kinds of issues.
With the regional ones.
We could certainly regionalize some of our social programs.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, I'm sorry, preschool, I had a question, could you remind me, how many sections do we have for preschool here?
Two.
Two, okay. Do we anticipate that being adequate capacity in the near term, long term?
Can I, can I speak to that in a few minutes?
Or is that, is that okay?
It's coming up.
Then we can talk about that.
If that's okay.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Ms. McCoy's not here, and I don't mind going through it if you'd like briefly, it's... You're standing in for Ms. McCoy?
I'm standing for Ms. McCoy. So, so Ms. McCoy wanted, I'm not gonna go through her entire report, but I did want to point out that, that the mentor program is concluding, she oversees that mentoring program, Callie Egan from the middle school is actually the mentor leader, but it's under Beth's responsibilities to oversee it. It links very closely to what we're gonna be talking about in a few minutes, about what is quality teaching, or effective teaching, and developing effective teaching, so it's a really important component in that, so I'm glad that that's still ongoing, we have the, trying to let you know that the middle school assistant headmaster was hired recently, Steven Robleski, who is a Wellsley High School teacher, he's been there for roughly 10 years.
What happened to the existing assistant?
The assistant headmaster at the middle school, Brian Maringer, is, has accepted a position in Arlington as the middle school principal.
Oh, good for him, I guess.
So, so that was a big, big undertaking, and so obviously she listed all the names, and I'm not gonna go through, but she had a debt of gratitude to all the people who participated in that, it's a pretty lengthy process. Great talent show, I actually attended myself, it was a lot of fun, really a lot of energy, I know that some of your children were participants, it was, it was really cool, I have to say, and a nice opportunity for kids to do something a little different than the traditional classroom setting, and the pride that they show about the things that they've worked so hard on is really cool, like as Beth mentioned, the Chinese zhiyoyo, for example, which was just incredible, it was just a lot of fun. Finally, I would mention, because I know that she would want to, is the student and teacher surveys, I'm not sure if the school committee is aware of this, but we do have student surveys for feedback for teachers, and teacher feedback for administrators, and we're taking that actually a step further this year, and giving administrators opportunities to give me feedback as the, as the superintendent.
Is that ever, the outcome ever shown to the school committee? And is the student survey, is that utilized in teacher evaluations at all?
The student survey is not formally used, I don't believe in the teacher surveys, is it?
It's intended to be part of the teacher's reflection for their areas of growth.
At one point, the state was saying it had to be.
Yeah, I thought it did.
And then there was a lot of back and forth, and I think that it eventually did not survive, but that doesn't mean the teachers aren't amenable to using it as part, again, as part of their reflection, which would be the same thing for me.
But just to be, ask a pointed question, if you had all the teachers say, all the students say one particular teacher was awful, it wouldn't matter, you couldn't use that as part of the evaluation, right?
Chances are, if a group of students said that, we would, that there was a concern, we would be aware of it, and would be addressing it along the way.
Think it would show up in other ways.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But the good news is that doesn't happen very often, and so, so that's Ms. McCoy's report, one of the things that was an offshoot of her report was that you had mentioned to us, Greg, maybe two meetings ago, that you wanted to hear more from us about what constitutes an effective teacher, how we develop effective teachers, and how we evaluate these people, so this really kind of ties into what we were just discussing.
Okay.
You shared with us a few articles, I don't know if everybody saw those articles, but I definitely did, from The Economist, and, and they were very good, and, but I would say that one of the real takeaways was a study by a gentleman named John Hattie, who's pretty well-known in the field of education, who looked at 65,000 research papers on, and kind of synthesized that, and boiled that down to the 20 most powerful ways to improve school time learning, and ultimately, what he concluded is, it really depends on what the teachers do in the classroom, so, what works, he talked about feedback to pupils being a high priority, kids getting good quality feedback, teaching, helping kids think about their own learning, as opposed to just thrusting things on them, peer tutoring, collaborative group work, those were, those were talked here. What surprised, surprised me from his research is that some of the things that we think make all the difference in the world, that are expensive, like teaching assistance, and reducing class sizes to below 20, in his findings, aren't as... reducing class sizes to below 20, in his findings aren't as, as effective. So, I thought that was fascinating. Improving school buildings, low on his list, in terms of impact. So, but what, after we looked at kind of what he continued to be effective teaching practices, we looked at what we have identified as effective teaching practices. And you have a list in your packet. There's, there's a great consistency between what we've identified and what he's identified. Things like conveying high expectations and safe learning environments that are founded on respect and empathy. Making clear what the learning objectives are at the beginning of each lesson, so that there isn't a lot of confusion. I like the word clarity. We've all been in classrooms where it's not clear what the whole point is, and it's not much fun. But when you're in a really high, high-quality learning experience, things are clear. You know what the aim is, you know where you're going, and that's hugely important. Engaging the students as active learners, as opposed to just speaking to them, filling the empty vessels, that's not effective teaching. Engaging them as part of that, and giving them a voice and a choice in what they are learning. These are things that make a difference, and these are things that we're doing. So, there's a long list there, which I'm happy to speak about, but I, you know, in speaking with Ms. McCoy, I almost elevated her to doctor again, with Ms. McCoy, we, we wanted to point out that those are effective teaching practices, but in developing effective teachers, we know that it's critical, and this is, again, in line with the articles that you shared, Greg, that, that practice over theory wins out every time. So, you can pour a lot of theory in about what constitutes good teaching, but at the end of the day, it's what happens in the classroom. So, and what happens in terms of your development of teachers. So, when a teacher takes a theory of education class versus a methods class where they actually practice their teaching strategies, the research shows that the practice of these things is what makes the difference. The same thing holds true as we do our professional development. When we use professional learning communities, or PLCs, and we bring teachers together to talk about what's working for them and what isn't, or we give them a protocol, say a tuning protocol, there's a tuning protocol out there where teachers share with their colleagues around a table, something that students did, and they share what their aim of that, objective of that lesson was. When those students, I mean, when those other colleagues provide that teacher with the feedback, something magical happens. Because what we don't want is our teachers to be operating in isolation, where they don't hear from their colleagues. And one of the things that we know about, for example, Finland, is there is a great deal of sharing going on. Finland's a country that's had great success. There's a lot of sharing, there's a lot of professional learning communities. We have things called data meetings, where we look at the work that are, I mean, that the progress that our students are making, and then make adjustments to our instruction based on the shortcomings, our identified needs. We have, and again, all consistent with the recommendations of The Economist articles. Our QPO program, where we have veteran teachers work with our younger teachers, observe them, the QPO with qualified peer observers, makes a difference. That feedback is important. Our mentoring program, as I mentioned before, we hear observations. So, all of this is stuff that we are currently doing, but we need to continue to work on. We need to make sure that our professional development is focused. And so, if you think about these things, and when you read the strategic plan, I'm speaking now mostly to the school committee, but to folks at home as well, when you read the strategic plan, I hope that you'll look for those kinds of phrases and practices, because we are using them, and we want to be better. We have some, we have an evaluation system in place that's based on standards. The state has state standards for evaluation. We have, Dover Sherburne has developed its own set of teaching standards. I wasn't here for that, but they're very much in alignment with the state's standards, and very much in alignment with the kinds of things that I've been talking about that showed up both in the article and that we currently do.
I'm curious about that. How, and I remember that that was the case, we had our own standards, and we were sort of ahead of the game, but how did we do that? Was that stuff that we already had?
The state said you had to, you could go with the state's, or you could go with your own. It had to be a negotiated process.
Wow.
So, we may have had ours already.
They just reworked them, and so rather than, than take away all that work that was done, they crosswalked into the state's, and we, that was the package that was sent in.
And who did that work?
That was that committee, Steve chaired, Mr. Bliss, when he was here with...
Okay.
There were school committee members.
Yes, I think I was.
And you were. It came out of that previous year's negotiations process.
So, it was an evaluation staff committee, which is pretty standard. Everyone was doing the same thing. So, in some communities, like for example in Westwood, they were using the Marshall rubric. So, we have our own. Anyway, Beth is giving you some examples of how you can see these things at Pine Hill School. Excellent examples. For example, 52A on the second, 52A, yes, where exemplary would be, students frequently assess and monitor the quality of their own work against the assessment criteria and performance standards, and make active, effective use of information and guide their own life.
I think I remember that. My kids will find out.
Do you?
Love self-reflection.
Yeah, yeah.
Peer critiquing.
That's good to hear.
By fifth grade, yeah.
I'm really glad to hear that.
I have a question. How, how much of this is integrated into the teacher evaluation?
All of it.
All of it?
Yeah. These are literally the standards that our teachers are...
So, when we go in, this is what we're looking for.
Is this the tool that you use?
And that is the tool that we use. That is the actual rubric.
For their assessment?
Okay.
So, it's, you know, it's unfortunate, in my mind, it's, it's kind of a sad, side impact of what happens to school committees and administrations. We don't have time to talk about this when we have school committee meetings, but it's absolutely a priority of what goes on in the schools. If you ask the teachers if they recognize those rubrics, it's certainly better, or it's going to be a real big problem. Just like you, when you evaluated me, there are standards. And so, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that we just don't have time to talk about. But I will say this, when we talked about the stress of students, and the emotional well-being of students in the strategic plan, and we also talked about staff, that's because this, these are hard to meet. It's tough when you have 22, 23 different kids with completely different family backgrounds and educational abilities, or intellectual abilities, I should say, or whatever, physical abilities, whatever their challenges may be, it's pretty tough to do it, day in and day out. So, the standards are very high for the school system, and as a result, our kids perform very well.
So, if we were to look at these standards, since we have our own, relative to, you know, other systems that we think are maybe not as high performing, would the standards be pretty much the same? Or, in other words, it's just kind of interesting to me how, I mean, I think parents and teachers make the biggest difference in a community, but if they all have sort of the same standards, how are some schools just not performing? It's just the background of the kids that come into the system there?
Well, I mean, there's, there are many different variables.
I mean, you can, teachers can do all this stuff.
Not all.
They only can do so much, right?
But actually, I wouldn't say that that's, actually, I wouldn't agree with that. I think that our teachers are exceptionally strong, they're highly qualified, and so they are capable of doing these things. But you don't see that same level of educator from school to school, unfortunately. And sometimes that's because of the level of education they've had, or experiences they've had, or supportive families that they have, or the level of expectations that the community has. So, there are many, many factors, but Dover Sherburne attracts very capable teachers. So, they're able to meet these standards, and they're accustomed to seeing those standards. When they came here, they'd seen standards like this before, and were held accountable for it through their learning experiences to become a teacher. So, I think, I think we are the beneficiaries of many things. Good students.
Yes.
Educated families, high-quality teachers who come to our system, hopefully good leadership, and all of that combined is why we are successful.
So, part of the professional development has, has intrigued me in the last negotiation that was appointed, teachers brought up, they were not happy with it, and so I think the new committee was reestablished, or an old committee was reestablished. How do you keep up with the teacher's opinion of how that's going? Because it was clear that they were not happy with what they had had for the past couple of years prior, in this past negotiation. So, Beth is in charge of that, right?
Beth is in charge of it, but not, not in isolation. Ultimately, I'm in charge of it. So, the, again, and I, and I, you're going to really get, well, you won't get sick of hearing it, unless you're watching at home.
No.
But other people will get sick of hearing me talk about the strategic plan, because the strategic plan gives us direction. It talks about things like enhancing the, the teaching, the instructional experiences through the use of things like design thinking, or, or different forms of assess, using different forms of assessment. So, if we're going to put all those things in there, in the strategic plan, then our professional development needs to link up with that. So, I think one of the frustrations for the teachers in the past has been, the professional development seemed somewhat random. Not entirely, and not, and not always, but sometimes you might spend a professional development day on something, and, and then we never heard much about it again. As opposed to, this is something we want to work on, and we're going to continue to work on for months to come, or in the next few years, until we get it right, and we can see that it's changing. So, I think the frustration that I heard, at least, as I was interviewing on my way in, was that was part of it. And then the other part was that people felt like it should be somewhat linked and consistent. So that the professional development that our teachers receive at Pine Hill School shouldn't be dramatically different than the professional development that our teachers receive at Chicaring, given that these kids, it's like having two teachers of fifth grade. They still have the same curriculum. So, those kids shouldn't be dramatically, having dramatically different learning experiences coming from one or the other. So, if the professional development is really different from Chicaring to Pine Hill, then that's a concern for us. So, that's something that people pointed out. They wanted greater consistency across the system. So, that would be, that's the horizontal alignment. Then the vertical alignment that Chris is talking about is that the professional development that comes through here leads up to professional development that makes sense in the middle school, which leads to professional development that makes sense in the high school. So, it's, so it's better now? Well, we're working on it.
If I may add, the teacher workshop day in November that our pre-K through 12th grade educators were all part of.
Oh, that's right.
You know, obviously, there's a survey feedback tool, you know, for, for next steps, and feedback about the quality and variety of professional development that was offered. But I heard many comments from staff here saying that was one of the best professional days we've ever had in Dover Sherburne, and what teachers appreciated was, you know, we all had a common focus, but educators had choice within their day, how to build, how to build components, again, within a common focus, to better their craft and educational practices.
It also was very much reflective on what people really wanted to see us work on. Cultural awareness, cultural responsiveness, making sure that all of our kids feel like they're part of this system, and that there isn't one group that's superior to another group, that we are one system pulling in the same direction. That was a priority from, that I heard from the people who were speaking to us. And when I shared that with the leadership team, they concurred. And that's why we ultimately developed that professional development day, over the course of the summer, by the way, we were talking about that and planning for that, so that when it came around in November, it fit.
Got it.
Greg, I have just one question, if I may.
Sure.
So, how does this rubrics, rubrics, integrating with the teacher's contract, is it some, is it an accepted standard after, is it a negotiated term during? I was just curious about that.
The, the evaluation tools that we use are negotiated. But the fact that we evaluate is required by the state, and there are certain levels of proficiency that the teachers have to demonstrate, and we have to report that out. So, it's not, the teachers, which is why, you know, when you guys had your committee that was discussing the rubrics that would be used, it was, it was going to impact the union, so there's a discussion about it, but, but there was no doubt about it. We needed to have standards that were reflective of the common core, and really strong instructional practices. The state was really, state led the way and said, here's the rubrics, we've done all the work, these are the state rubrics. If you want to adapt them, that's fine, but you have to go through a process, and we want to know what they are. So, it's, there's some autonomy, but there are high standards for every school system.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And now your report, I guess.
Okay, yeah. Well, I will go quickly, since that took a little longer than I hoped. Just a reminder, or to let those of you who don't know, maybe the folks at home, that the Sherburne Town meeting did go very well for us, which we're pleased with. I think it's just important for me to take the opportunity to thank the folks from advisory who worked with us, who listened to us, who followed this process, and thank all of the members of the school committee, who, you know, everyone was doing their part. It wasn't always perfect, it never is when you're building a budget, but at the end of the day, I think we came up with something that the taxpayers felt was responsible, and, and we can feel good about, in terms of continuing to provide for our students the highest quality of learning experiences. So, that is very positive. I've been in touch with state reps, which is something that I think is really important, was I was receiving a lot of urgent emails from the State Association of Superintendents, reminding us to get in touch with our state reps, asking them to support increases to Chapter 70, increases to circuit breaker, increases to regional transportation. And I have to say, I think those efforts on the part of the Superintendent's Association from across the state were helpful. So, so I just wanted to bring it to speed on that. You know that the strategic plan went out. I had a great quarterly visit, and this speaks to, to Scott's question about preschool stuff. So, I had a great quarterly visit with Barbara, and one of the things that I really had in my sights was spending some time in preschool. The integrated preschool is a hugely important piece of our, of Pine Hill School. Likewise, it's a hugely important piece of Chicaring. It's an important piece of this entire school system, because this is where we make inroads with many of our challenged learners. Those who are at least living in town at age three typically come through our programs. So, this is where we start our earliest intervention, and literally from three years old on. That's different. When I was growing up, you came to kindergarten, and they began to backfill. Kids were missing a lot of, missing a lot of milestones, and the schools were then expected to try and backtrack and correct those things, and they were always playing behind the eight ball. We've gotten much smarter than that through the years, and have decided that the intervention should come early, and if it's integrated, so that it's our special ed population with our gen ed population, that that's the best model for the kids. But it's not, it's not just a flip of the switch, and you just put the kids together and off you go. Some of our kids are pretty involved, they have some pretty significant challenges. Some of them have one-to-one aides. There are many adults in our preschool programs, both sides, in Dover and in Sherburne, with not gigantic... not gigantic classrooms of kids, or with not large class sizes, but very complex kids, with kids who want a meaningful gen ed experience. So it's, it's not an easy undertaking, and it's important that it's done right. So in, in passing through, I have to admit, I was, I was struck by the tight feel to the preschools. And as Scott mentioned, how many do we have? We, we have two classes right now for thirty, thirty-four students currently. So.
Where are those classrooms?
Down towards the kindergarten wing.
One is in the kindergarten wing, and one is right at the bottom of the gymnasium ramp.
Okay. Is there, is there a ratio of kids, like, gen?
The state identifies that, yes.
So.
You have to have more gen ed kids than specialized kids.
What if you don't?
And you're not an integrated preschool.
Doesn't that just sort of depend on the population?
Yes. And there's things that you can do to justify that, or, but you would always seek to keep that ratio.
It's more the number of, isn't it, the more of the integrated, the IEP students in versus, you could still have a whole pre-K of gen ed.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Right, but I was saying.
It's the number of special needs kids to service providers.
So you can have, in a class of twenty, you can have five IEPs. Or in a class of fifteen, no more than half can be in IEPs. So those are sort of the two ranges that you work with. If there, if during the year, another student presents, you can file a waiver with the state so that you're not in compliance, because it's something we weren't anticipating. So, but it's more of not, not, not jumping over those barriers versus having too many gen ed kids in class.
But I think what I wanted, what I wanted to point out is that, from my perspective, and I would pull my special ed background into this conversation for the basis of this statement, is that it's, it feels tight for some of our students, or for the, from my perspective, it feels a little tight. Not over-the-top tight, but it feels tight, and I think we need to take a look at that. I think we need to consider, we've had a few kids move in that have brought the numbers up, and we're anticipating a few movements. So we wanna look at it a little bit further, but perhaps come forward with a proposal in June for some ideas on how we could potentially address this.
So is there something that might very well be necessary or recommended for the coming school year?
Potentially post-budget, that's part of the problem.
And you're talking about the costs?
It looks like we might be on some good news for the Circuit Breakers, so that helps.
Well, that's, that's true. And so, you know, we would have to, you know, we would have to look, obviously, within the budget that's been voted. We're gonna have to find a way to make it work if we do have to expand it in any way. There are a lot of variables that we, we need to, we need to look at. But ultimately, we wanna make sure that the experience for the kids is the best it can be, and it's pretty darn good. I mean, I'm, I'm proud of it. I had a great time in there. You see this picture, I was having a blast with the kids. It's, it's a good, good, we have a great integrated preschool here. It really is, in my mind, a model. I'm talking mostly about the numbers. The numbers in the space, the spaces are not, they're not the same-sized classrooms as our other classrooms, I don't think. One of them is, I think. But one is a little smaller, it's a little narrower, and that feels a little tight to me. So some of the variables might be looking at the spaces. So there's, there's a lot more that we wanna look at, but I just, I wanted to put it on your radar tonight, I didn't want it to go without saying, so that's why I'm bringing it up. I was, you stole my thunder in the Challenge Success.
Sorry.
But I went to Friday night, so I didn't go to Saturday, so I'm glad, actually, that you brought that up. And Saturdays was the teams from all the schools in the area that are Challenge Success schools, which was awesome. The speaker, Brad Sachs and Denise Pope, were also excellent on Friday night, and pretty well-attended, given that it was prom night. So I was impressed.
Wow.
So it was a good, good event. Kudos to the folks at Challenge Success, they are really awesome, and they are true school supporters, and always thinking of the kids, so that's my report.
All right, thank you very much.
Good question.
Sure.
Um, sorry, just on the transportation. Uh, you're trying, talking to state reps, increase state, state funding for transportation, would that include kids going to out-of-district placements, or would that only be?
Just regional transportation. So it really is just for the region, transportation. There is no reimbursement right now for out-of-district transportation.
We can't Circuit Breaker it, we can't do anything with it, we've been fussing about that for years.
But it does, it does matter, because one of the.
It doesn't go to Circuit Breaker?
It does not. Transportation does not. It's not a service.
Well, one of the reasons that, regional transportation was a huge incentive to get schools to regionalize, they were going to pay for transportation. That was the original deal.
Yeah.
It's been changed.
I was just hoping that, so you gotta get them to their out-of-district placement.
Yes, another one of our costs.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
My favorite part.
Your favorite part.
Your financial report.
Lovely financials, as of May fourth. So I, I think I come bearing some pretty good news, but it's been a positive year compared to, I think, what we experienced last year, so that, that's, it's, it's good on all's heart. So we're continuing to project your positive salary variance of approximately $70,000, and that's a, that's composed of, or comprised of, post-budget staffing changes. In the maternity leaves, we've had multiple maternity leaves here that have, they, they're not full, obviously, when they're, take longer maternity leaves, they don't get paid for the full-time, and so their salary is relieved in your budget, and the substitute cost comes into play. So that has definitely sort of helped increase the variance over budget. If you look at your status of appropriations, you'll see a larger number there right now, but that is because there's still money in the budget, or less you. Additional substitute costs, our educator workshop days, and custodial overtime. So we are really anticipating most of those line items to be spent 100% by the time school ends. On our operating expenditures, I'm able to project right now two positive variances that I think we will see as, when it comes to June 30th. One is in the sped contracted services, probably of at least $20,000, and that's due to a change in a related service connected to an IEP that we're not having to acquire this year, and approximately $10,000 in utilities, based on the usage and some of the very, the positive pricing that, we saw a pricing change this year mid-year. We didn't account for it in the budget, because we're holding on in case usage went up, and that hasn't been the case. So that is good news on that end. We've encumbered most of the larger expenses from now until June 30th. Obviously, there's still some incidental day-to-day expenses that we'll still incur, but you could sort of look at the line items and get a feel. Of course, we will spend our course reimbursement. If you remember, we, whatever we don't utilize from course reimbursement is spent on workshop days before June 30th. So we usually, we'll use 100% of those funds. And the other ones are, you know, pretty much in line right now. On the out-of-district, we continue to see, you know, we're not holding steady, we have several adjustments in some of the tuitions, because some IEPs have been changed at some of our out-of-districts, some pricing changes, we've had one new placement since March. So we have increased our out-of-district negative variance by 30,000, so we're sitting at about 52,000 negative right now, and that includes transportation, too. Part of the transportation is where we have some additional non-routine transportation, so if, if IEP, if out-of-district children stay after school, then that's an additional cost to our accept matrix. So we're seeing a little bit of that. And then we also just had a, a parent transportation that we didn't budget, based on placements that we're now seeing, so that's why you see the transportation.
What did you say, parent transportation?
Transportation, where we reimburse parents. Because normally, you would expect with the accept matrix phenomenon, that you're, you wouldn't see a variance in your transportation costs, so that's why I just wanna explain why you do see a variance. And as, as Dr. Keo mentioned, and as, as Scott read his report, which, thank you, Scott, for reading, we did receive some positive legislative approvals on Circuit Breaker. So although we came in to let you know in the fall that reimbursement was at 65%, so it had gone down over what we had started the trend of 70, we do, we are now getting word that when we get our final fourth-quarter payment, we should see an overall reimbursement rate for the whole year of 72%. Now, I don't necessarily, I wouldn't bank on that exact figure, but we are expecting to get more than 65%. So that will help us with a couple of different things. But I think, as you remember, we are using $65,000 of Circuit Breaker money that I knew that we would have left over to roll, to cover our fiscal year 19 budget. But if you look at the bottom of your status of appropriations, I gave you sort of how the scenarios could play out. The 65% of Circuit Breaker, and this is including the in-district, down at the bottom, the 327,000, we've expended through May 134, we have encumbered 98. So we have a total projected of 233, which gives us our remaining balance of 94,000. So of that, of course, 65,000 we need to hold on to, to, to pay for our fiscal year 19 expenses. If it does go up to 72%, you'll see we're almost at 130,000 in Circuit Breaker. One of the, one of the very few prepays that the state allows you to do is you can prepay up to three months of out-of-district expenses. So one option we have, if we have some foreseen fiscal year 19 expenditures, is to use some of that money and prepay some of our fiscal year 19 tuitions.
Draw from those accounts.
Right, because then that would, that would relieve some money in the operating budget that we can maybe cover some of these unforeseen expenses. It also gives us a little bit more cushion if we have any unexpected placements next year. So it's, it gives us just another level of cushion over the town's stabilization fund that they have already established for you guys, in case there's unexpected out-of-district expenses. So that's what we, where we are right now, we'll wait and see. We do have still some activity, I think, in the special ed arena, so we don't really know exactly when we start until June 30th, but we're being proactive in requesting tuition bills, so that we can do some prepaying. And the reason why we have to prepay, just to give you a little more background, maybe probably more than you wanna know, you're limited in what you can carry forward in your Circuit Breaker fund to what you received in the previous year. But for Sherburne, the way that we're Sherburne in the region, we're only allowed what Sherburne really gets from their students, and it's not, that's not the bulk of your dollars. The bulk of your dollars sits at the region. So we have to be careful about managing what's left in that Circuit Breaker account, otherwise it, we lose it, and it flush, flows through free cash for the time when they get their free cash certified.
It's two years, right?
One year.
It's just one year? Huh. Have we, when, have we ever let money go to free cash? I say let money, I mean, seems like you'd always choose to prepay something.
Right. There, there, where it sort of came to our attention is that there was a carryforward balance that the town had two years ago, when I was first coming on, and when this, when they came out to do the certification, they said, well, the only, it was like 44,000, and they said, the only amount that you're allowed to have is the 16,000 that was attributed to the town of Sherburne. So some did flush out, but I don't, it wasn't, it wasn't Circuit Breaker money that the school had on their books.
When you say attributed to the town of Sherburne.
Right. That comes directly to the town of Sherburne. Versus all your Sherburne students who are in grades six through age 22, their Circuit Breaker money comes to the region. And we then, then we turn around, and we send it to the two towns based on the allocation.
There's always something new that I have no clue about. I'm sure I knew that, but that's, did you guys know that?
Because we're, we are.
That doesn't feel like new news.
We're our own towns, actually. In the eyes of.
They're considered, they're considered a student of the regional school district. So the money comes into the region, and we then immediately turn around and cut a check to the two towns for that Circuit Breaker.
If there's a turn back.
No, every quarter, we turn, we give checks, you know, you use a big chunk of money you get every quarter, because your Circuit Breaker reimbursement comes to us.
It's really, it's really the town's money, when you think about it, because.
Because of the regional agreement.
The regional agreement, you guys cover special ed at the town levels.
Okay, it comes to the region, but you give it right back to the.
Because you cover it.
Because it's really, it's really the towns.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Up to 22.
Is it based on true use, usage, or just usage, as the allocation?
It's based on, it's based on the actual reimbursement of the students. It's, it's, we could, we identify it dollar-for-dollar by student.
So it's not the, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so it's true. Remember, it's, there's a lag, right? So we're getting this year what we spent last year. So it's, it's actually dollar-for-dollar to your students. So we, I did take that, too, I fought for, because of the reg, I said, I shared the regional agreement with DOR, who was certifying Sherburne's cash, to say, really? In the regional agreement, these, these kids belong to the two towns, and therefore, we should give, be able to hold that into the Circuit Breaker fund? But they said no. So that's why we have to manage that. If we're, if we're looking to sort of play around, not play around, but move it from fiscal year to fiscal year, we always need to be cognizant of that, there's a.
How you execute on it.
Exactly. So that's where the prepay comes in to play for us. And like I said, for one thing that is allowed, there actually is a reg that says you can prepay.
And the legs go up.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So is there any issue with us going past eight? Not that we necessarily need to go past eight, you know, with the polls closing and other people being elected and things like that, is that?
No, no.
Okay.
We will hurry and get out of here, though, before eight.
Turn to a pumpkin.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna show up and take your.
The new person has to be sworn in and everything before.
But they stand by, and they do that, some people.
Really?
Yes.
We better hurry up.
Those people.
Yes, you are sworn in.
Those people.
Twenty minutes. So we'll, we'll keep, I'll keep the committee abreast, and I'll give, I'll keep you and, you and Scott up to date, so you know how everything turns out for the year, right? It's a much different scenario than last year, where we had to go and ask the town for additional $70,000, so.
We're in much better shape.
We're in much better shape, and I do give huge kudos to Barbara and her staff, because they do really manage the budget here really well, and it's a great help to me.
That's important to hear.
I think, yeah. I thank them for that. Any questions on that?
Yeah, probably more of a comment to make in June, when you're closer to closing out the books, but I'm curious what, over the past couple of years, with the, with our change to how we're doing budgeting, you know, two years ago, we went to the.
Fun budgeting?
Yeah. Like how, you know, I think we're kind of damping out, merging on a, maybe a very narrow band of operation, so we're not fluctuating too much.
Right. So where, where you have no control is in your salaries, right? So we're only off salaries because of changes that happened that we didn't know about. So I think you're always gonna have that fluctuation.
Yep.
Where you, where I think we've done good, and we still have a little tweaking, but you don't wanna cut yourself too short, is like utilities, you know, we've, you've homed down your transportation, because we used to have a large fuel surcharge credit that we would carry, but we were, you know, the fuel, it's not crazy like it used to, so we've trimmed back those.
Yeah, and so we're becoming very tuned to.
Exactly.
What those variables are, and kind of what the width of that variation might be for more accurate budgeting.
Exactly.
It's great.
Right, right.
And when you think about the variance, it's, in terms of the big budget, it's, it's not a huge number.
Exactly. It seems big, but it's in comparison, it's really, we managed to, you know, less than 1%, 2% of the budget, so. This is your time where you get one of your quarterly revolving funds, special revenue reports, just a couple of things to highlight. On the building rental, you'll notice expenditure of like 25,000, 18,000 of that is the new carpeting that we did in the auditorium. The rest of it is.
Is it there?
Yeah, well, we'll take you on a tour, looks really good. The rest of it is custodial overtime. So if you remember now, any custodial overtime that's incurred, because there's a group here. that's incurred because there's a group here is now being charged to your building rental versus being charged to the operator. So, that was a change we did this year. I'll also just note in the gift fund, the expenditures there is $10,000 for the MUDS grant that helped pay for the sound system, projection system, but also, you'll read in my report that we are moving forward with the new circulation desk for the library that I know has been on the wish list. And we were, it's, we were fortunate, we were contacted by the town a week or so ago that they had found in one of their, they're doing some cleanup of their accounts, they found a gift that was credited to Pine Hill of about $3,000 from, I think it was from 2013. So, with that, we immediately felt like that would be a great way to...
It just appears.
To, to help Ms. Ryan with one of her wish lists and sort of elevate the use of the library. So, that will be ordered by June 30th, and hopefully in place by then, so that's part of that. And then on capital, great news on capital, we have, the only thing we have left to do is the window that I'm sitting here staring at, wishing that it was already done, and that is scheduled to be done right after school gets out. With the completion of that wall of windows, the whole window project will be completed, and we're happy to say that it came in, it came in $22,000 under budget, mainly because we put a contingency in that ask for the town, and we ended up not, not only not needing the contingency, but one set of the windows, they were able to actually even put in at less than what they originally quoted for us, and so that was great news.
That never happens.
Right, that never happens. We just lucked out on that. As you know, the exterior painting was done over the summer, that came in under about $200. The ceiling fans were just completed, the complete installation over April break, I think it was.
Those were very nice to have at the talent show.
Yes, I hear the thanks.
Stage looked wonderful.
Yes, that, and so, we actually had a savings on the fans, because when we went out and got bids, it was the, what the quote that we had used when we requested capital came in about $3,500 less, and then the auditorium projection, as I just mentioned, you have to get the total cost of that, then that's where you add 10,000 to that, because that was the MUDS fund gift that we gave. So, as of June 30th, we'll be able to close out all of our capital accounts with the town of Sherburne, and won't have anything left on the books, because as you know, with the windows, we took like three years of stuff, so all that's cleaned up, and we'll return, you know, probably the $25,000 back.
Great, your work is done.
Oh, man, windows, windows, windows.
And then I just highlighted at the chair's request, the maintenance items, so some of the maintenance items, if you remember, we had some money last year, so we did the wireless clocks, and we did the air conditionings, the three units in the kindergarten. This year, we purchased the aerial lift, and we refinished the stage floor, and you can see the pricing of those.
Any questions?
For, I was just going to quickly, so for 19, the projects that are on the plate here is mainly floors, we're doing all the hallway floors and the cafeteria. That product is, became on, the whole product that we want to purchase, plus the labor, is now on the state contract, so the vendor who did our auditorium, we're going to engage and purchase all that off-state contract, so we are starting to put the timeline together on that. The concrete work, we ended up with three quotes, and maybe I can reconvene the sub-building committee, because there's a couple of different ways we can go with that. If you're still interested to stay on, I can flip those by you.
I'd be interested, though.
Yeah, the quotes came in, the quotes came in where we, you know, in the, what we requested from the town, in fact, one of the quotes also is going to allow us to fix those big cracks right in the front that just drive us all crazy, so we'll be able to...
Those big cracks in the new concrete.
In the new concrete.
It was just done two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, so, one of the contractors actually came up with a plan for that, and then we are replacing the refrigerator, the skin of the refrigerator in the cafeteria, and that will be scheduled for the summer. So, that, again, will be busy, because the floors will have to be, there's a lot of moving stuff that will need to do.
During the summer, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, exactly.
I guess all this, the concrete work as well?
All this will be in the summer, so when you come back in the fall, if all goes well, everything will be completed.
And perhaps a smidge of painting.
I told him, we're painting the auditorium.
Yeah.
So, just once you go in there, you can't...
After we replace the carpet.
I know, I know, but Peter and his crew are actually going to do it, and so I know that they'll take pride in...
It's free.
It's free.
Really?
Well, he's not going to know what to do, because he's not buffing the floors.
Exactly.
Exactly.
All right, any questions? Thank you very much, that was thorough, and very good. All right, so item seven is the consent agenda, does anybody have any changes to the, and that's only the minutes from March 16th, anybody have any changes?
Two.
Positions, okay, motion to second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, just communications for your reading pleasure. Do they entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.